It is 6:30. I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, could you note attendance for the roll call, please?
Yes.
And if I could ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And note that we are in workshop format this evening, which is a more informal working session of council. We will, we have an agenda before us that we will be following. However, no official actions will be taken this evening. It is for discussion and council working purposes only. We do have an open forum this evening. We invite anybody who would like to address council on any topic to please join us. If you have already signed in on the sign-in sheet, we'll see who's signed in. And we'd ask that you approach the podium, give your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Blaine, I assume you're going to present later on. Perfect. Jamie Jensen.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I'm here, of course, because we're looking at the Tanner's Brook development that we'd like to do shortly if we can. I think, Amir, you had one question whether I had concerns with staff or something like that. And when I first got here, I didn't know the staff. Since then, they've done some pretty large things. And so I have no concerns whatsoever about staff. I'm certain that any development work we do, they'd be able to handle without any difficulty. We're sort of in a quandary right now because we sort of took the information that we had from you and guessed what you wanted from us and presented a purchase agreement in that manner. That purchase agreement was turned down. And so I'm here sort of to ask you, what did we miss? And how can we make this work? What in your mind, I guess, was lacking in the purchase agreement? And how can we change it? And then, once we know that, are we going to be able to do that and satisfy your requirements? As you know, the property is zoned for residential. All comp plans have it being low density. You have a Realtor, and there are city improvements there. So it felt like you were coming, setting it up for us to do this. And then we were pretty shocked with the response. We'd like to present another purchase agreement, but before we do so, we'd like to get some feedback.
Thank you for being here. I am going to refer you to our listing agent. And all of those conversations would be with our listing agent.
Okay. And I spoke with him. Do you know the property's not listed?
So this is your opportunity to provide feedback to council. We typically don't engage in a dialogue at this time. But I want you to know that our listing agent is available.
And I spoke with him. And I thought that he would be here on that last meeting to provide his input. And he wasn't invited, I guess, for whatever reason. And I have been in touch with him. And he has not, he doesn't know very much, unfortunately. And so I asked him about it. And I said, where's the listing? I want to make sure I'm hitting all of their points. And he said, it's not listed. I haven't been instructed to list it yet. And so it's been, you've had a Realtor for two months, and it's not listed. And so I don't know if you understand my quandary here, as I'm trying to, trying to hit a mark, and I can't see the mark.
Understood.
And so how can I get some feedback if I can't get it from the Realtor? I've asked. We've had, we have a good conversation. We've had several good conversations. But I'm not getting an idea of what you guys want. And so how do, how do we get to that point? How can we improve communication to that point, if at all?
Thank you for the feedback. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? Not hearing any. We will close open forum this evening and bring conversation back to council. Council, we have a number of agenda items before us tonight, first up being the Emerald Ash Bore presentation. Dave, you want to do a quick introduction?
Yep. As you guys recall, earlier this summary made you guys aware of Emerald Ash Bore as president in the city limits of Forest Lake. I invited Jonathan here from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture to kind of give us a presentation on Emerald Ash Bore and some of the, you know, upcoming responsibilities and things we're going to be needing to do as a city and the public works to, you know, sort of take care of this. So anything else? Jonathan, take it away.
All right. Thanks for having me. Just to start out with, here's a sample of what it looks like, the larval stage and the adult beetle. All right. Well, as many of you probably know, Emerald Ash Bore is in the state, and now it's in your community. And it's killing ash trees, which make up a pretty large chunk of the forest in Minnesota. And so I'll just kind of go over the general biology of EAB, what you can, how you detect it, and then some of the regulations and management options available. So, oh, there's no words on here. All right. Looks like the graphics didn't come through completely. Either way, I can wing it. So the adult beetle is active basically from May to September. They will emerge from trees kind of in the end of May, beginning of June, depending on when the things start to heat up. They then emerge from the tree, and they do some maturation feeding, and then they mate. And then the females lay their eggs in the bark crevices of ash trees. And each female lays anywhere from 60 to 200 eggs. So you can see how these populations of beetles build up pretty quickly. And so the eggs hatch, and then the larvae burrow through the bark and into the phloem layer, where they then feed and disrupt the transport of nutrients between the roots and the canopy of the tree. And so as enough EAB builds up in the tree, the larvae essentially strangle the tree and kill it. And so with females laying anywhere from 60 to 200 eggs in their lifetime, which is about 30 to 50 days, you can see how this can build up pretty quickly and start to kill a lot of trees. And so here's an example of just a nice ash tree-lined street. And then on the left is an Emerald Ash Bore gallery. So a tree can handle one gallery, one insect, pretty easily. But as the numbers build up, this is what happens. You start to have gallery on top of gallery, and then you have mass tree death kind of happen all in a small timeframe. And so that's a major impact to budgets and aesthetics and property values and all that. And it also can be very dangerous. So it's just another example of what Emerald Ash Bore does to the tree. This all happens underneath the bark. It's the larvae that do the damage. So it's, they only attack true ash trees, so that's all fraxenous species. The state has three types of ash that grow naturally. That's black ash, green ash, and white ash. We have black ash throughout two-thirds of the state, green ash throughout the entire state, and then pockets of white ash kind of in the eastern part of the state. We have the most ash out of any state in the lower 48. So that's about a billion trees. It makes up a large chunk of our forest. And a lot of that exists in our communities and then in the black ash swamps in north-central Minnesota, where pretty much that's the only type of tree that grows in that habitat. So, wow, there's nothing there.
The version that's on our packet has the graphics. Is it better to just switch over to the version of the presentation that's in the deck?
Yeah, that would be good.
We can flip slides for you.
Thank you. Anyways, all right.
Hold on just a moment.
So ash trees in general. So the process of, when a tree becomes infested, it usually takes about five years to be killed by Emerald Ash Bore. Ash trees become very brittle when they die. So within a couple of years after they die, they tend to fall apart, and they don't stay standing in the environment. So that is a real danger for any tree that could land on persons or property. So really, a good focus is to try to do outreach to residents, because many residents have ash trees planted in their yards. After Dutch elm disease came through in the 70s and the 80s and wiped out a lot of our elm trees, a lot of people replanted with ash. And that was a common tree that was cheap to get and grew in really, really crummy environments that had a lot of salt and things like that. So we are now overrepresented by ash in our environment, and that can be a danger to people and property. So really getting a handle on where ash trees are in your parks, on your city property, and then talking with residents so that they have a plan of action and they know that they need to do something rather than nothing. Because an ash tree that's already dead is going to be much more expensive to remove from your property than it is if it's still alive. Tree care companies will not want to climb trees that are already dead and killed from EAB, because they're much more dangerous. And so that means you're going to have to bring bigger equipment if it's located near your house and things like that. And it's not good for anybody. All right. Where are we at on this?
Did we get it?
And just as a side note, there is a, there is a secondary host for Emerald Ash Bore. Oh, there it is up there.
You're going to have to cue me to scroll down.
Perfect. And so right there is just showing kind of the distribution of ash in the state. And then on the side of that is just some list, a list of names of general cultivars that people might have planted. Just because they have a Marshall seedless, it's still an ash tree, it's still green ash, it's still highly susceptible. You can go to the next one. So the secondary host tree is a white fringed tree, and that's just, that's a shrub that people will plant in their yard. It's a host for Emerald Ash Bore. It's not native to Minnesota, but if you're going to plant a new tree or shrub in your yard, it's probably not a good idea to pick the white fringed tree. Keep going. All right. How to recognize it? So the two main ways to recognize it is by seeing the Emerald Ash Bore gallery, so the insect feeding gallery that the larvae makes, or the larva itself. This all happens underneath the bark, and sometimes enough bark will kind of pop off to where you can see that on the tree. And so they make a distinct S-shaped gallery or serpentine-like gallery. And so if only a Gryllis makes this type of gallery, so if you see that in an ash tree, you know it's Emerald Ash Bore. There will be similar types of galleries in oak trees or in birch trees, but if that's in an ash tree and it's a nice S-shaped in there, you know it's Emerald Ash Bore. And same goes for the larva that I passed around. They have two little spine-like projections on the tail end that are called Yergomphi, and that's another, if you find a larva in an ash tree, you can tell that it's Emerald Ash Bore through that. There is also a D-shaped exit hole and the adult beetle that are easy to identify, but those are two less common ways that you're actually going to see the damage from Emerald Ash Bore. Looking for D-shaped exit holes that are an inch big on a large tree is, it'll take a long time. And if you see it at eye level, there's going to be a lot of other damage in the tree. And the adult beetles, I've been working on Emerald Ash Bore for 10 years now, and I've still only come into contact with them a couple of times. They're not very social. So it's not very likely. And then there's just kind of some images of other commonly confused insects, Japanese beetle, and then a lot of times people will call in the six-spotted tiger beetle because they see it run across the ground. All right. The best things to look for for Emerald Ash Bore, the signs and symptoms that you're going to see first, you can stop right on that one, is woodpecker damage. That is the best way that we've been surveying for it throughout the state and detecting it early. So you can go back down one. So here's just kind of the general timeline of what happens in an infested tree. So in that first year, you're not going to see any damage at all. There's some small larvae present underneath the bark, starting to tunnel and feed. There's no outward signs. In that second year, you're going to have larger larvae underneath the bark. You're going to have more and more eggs being laid on that ash tree, so more larvae brewing in. You might see a couple woodpecks on one branch in the canopy. Not much you'll notice. You'd have to be looking really hard to see that. So it's that third year, if you're paying attention, that you can start to see that damage. And so you'll see kind of oval-shaped dime-sized woodpeck holes on branches three to five inches in diameter in the mid-canopy. And so you'll start to see that on several branches. You know woodpeckers are feeding on insects underneath the bark. So that's, that's our biggest clue. And you can kind of see this blonding of the bark in that mid-canopy from the woodpecker feeding activity. As you get into the fourth year of infestation, you actually start to see canopy decline. And so this isn't just, you know, dead branches in the crown. It's a general thinning of the canopy. There's less leaves, there's smaller leaves, there's just more light coming through. As EAB builds an area, you might see whole blocks of ash trees that kind of have generally thin canopies. So that's, it kind of all happens at once there. And that's when people really kind of tend to notice that there's something wrong with their tree, when they really see that canopy impact, because they usually don't notice the general woodpecker feeding to begin with. And then, once you're in that year five and six, your tree's basically dead. You're probably going to see woodpecker damage all the way down to the, to the roots of the tree. And then the tree will be dead in the next year or two, and the bark will start to fall off. So that's just kind of the general progression of symptoms. As EAB builds up in an area and there's more beetles flying around, that can actually be shortened by a year or two. I like to give the example of Winona, Minnesota, where EAB built up in the river valley and in the pluffs. And once it reached the town, trees were dying in more of the three- to four-year range, just as how much EAB was flying around. And so just to show the example again, you're first going to see the damage in that mid-to-upper canopy, in the three-to-five-inch diameter branches, on the south-southwest-facing side of the tree first. That's where it starts, and then it works its way down the tree. Because if Emerald Ash Bore started on the trunk of the tree, it would eat itself out of a home a lot faster. So it's really maximizing the use of the live phloem in a tree. And there's some examples of the woodpecker damage that you, that you'll see on ash trees. Just kind of the shallow, dime-sized, oval-shaped woodpeck holes just to the surface of the wood to get the larva underneath the bark.
What is the blonding you referred to?
So the blonding is from the woodpeckers actually searching the tree for the larvae underneath the bark. And so they tend to scrape off a little bit of the bark, and so it creates that blonde color.
Okay.
And that's just something that you can pick out from a distance. And then what we use high-powered binoculars then to look closer for the actual woodpecker holes. There's, woodpeckers will go after other insects too in trees, but it's just this general look of it. Because a lot of times, there's other native insects that might be in declining trees that go deeper into the wood, or just on the trunk of the tree, or below a dead limb. This will be in perfectly healthy trees, kind of in the mid-canopy, and then work its way all the way down. They also make vertical bark cracks where the tree, once initially infested, it tries to heal around that gallery. It builds up callous tissue. And then, as the tree continues to grow, the bark separates from where that larval feeding gallery is, and it makes a nice vertical crack that you can, you can see a gallery inside of. And so that's in that picture right there. And just an example of some native insect damage and woodpecker damage is right there. It's usually a lot deeper into the wood and has like a shadow instead of being light and colored. All right. Distribution in the state. Right now, it's in 22 counties, most of it being kind of the metro area down to the southeastern part of the state. The newest finds, besides you guys, are Stearns County, and now in New Ulm, and then in Worthington. So a lot of times along major transportation corridors where people are moving, moving wood and potentially infested material. Thank you. And so here's just a national map. It's now in 35 states and five Canadian provinces. And you can see a little blue square all the way over there in Colorado. That was a 600-mile jump it took from somebody bringing infested wood a long distance. So it started in Detroit, Michigan in 2002, was when it was first identified, and it spread that quickly throughout the US, throughout most of the native range of ash. Here's a map of our state. So the Minnesota Department of Agriculture provides an up-to-date, interactive map of Emerald Ash Bore infestation. The red is the counties that are quarantined for Emerald Ash Bore, and then those green polygons indicate a general infested area. And so those are buffers put on confirmed infested tree locations, so that whether you're a tree care worker or a citizen, you can look at this map. And if you're within that generally infested zone, you should be deciding what you're going to do with your ash trees at that point, because there's a good chance that Emerald Ash Bore is already in your tree. So, and as you zoom into an area, there will be points that pop up, so you can see the exact locations.
How does Wisconsin look to the east there, as far as, are they quarantined like we are, about as many counties?
So they, more of their state is quarantined, but still kind of the upper third isn't completely. And that's where the bulk of their black ash forests are too. So it's good it hasn't reached their main ash resource yet, but they were, it showed up in Chicago a lot earlier, and so they were the benefactors of that as well. And they have more infested counties and more areas. Minnesota's been fortunate, as I'll show in another slide, but we're still only at about 25% of our counties infested. And at the national rate, it's usually about 80% of your state is infested by, you know, year 11 that it's been here. And so that has been one good thing, and that's really due to a number of factors. People reporting it early, so you can get a jump on management and removing infested trees. Aggressive sanitation in cities that do find it. And cold helps as well. Last year, we had a really cold winter, and that's in certain areas. So in the metro, it was around 40, 50% mortality. Places up in, like Sauk Center, we saw upwards of 90% mortality. And now that doesn't eradicate it, but it gives managers another year or two more time before that population starts to build back up. So it's just another helpful thing, but it shouldn't change any of the actions that you actually take. Those purple squares on there are biological control sites. And so that's something that the Minnesota Department of Agriculture does directly. That is a direct management tool that we have. And those are three types of parasitic wasps that are highly host-specific that kill Emerald Ash Bore in mature life stages. And so we've been doing that in the state since 2010. They're well-established in the Twin Cities and in the southeastern part of the state. And really, you need large forested tracks. So this isn't to save your landscape-level tree, it's to keep ash in the forest in the long term. And so we are doing that, continue as long as we need at least kind of a 40-acre site with at least 20% ash, with Emerald Ash Bore present, to do those types, do that type of releases and work. And that is, there's a federal rearing facility that makes that resource available to us, which we then decide which locations deserve those releases. And those are kind of the general infested polygons over where we are right now.
Is that, what does that represent? Is that one known tree, a cluster of trees?
So that's just one point. So that buffer will get bigger as more trees are reported in that given area. But just, I mean, one tree, we just try to get a representation of area. There's many more. And so here's kind of the chart showing our rate of infestation compared to the national average, which is something to be thankful for at this point. Try to keep that line down as long as possible.
Where did you first note it, in the area?
In Forest Lake.
Yeah, in this, in the Forest Lake community.
Yeah, so it was at the golf course.
Okay.
I think it was hole 16.
Okay.
It was actually, a coworker of mine was out golfing for the weekend.
Oh, for, okay.
Happened to notice it.
You should spend some more time in Forest Lake. This is so hopeful.
Yeah, but it was found kind of right in Scandia, on that, the borderline of Washington and Shisago County, several years back. And so, I mean, it's been creeping towards here for a number of years. So that was actually probably natural sped from that area.
Is there any kind of treatment at all that can help?
Absolutely. So, and that's, and this is to be decided more on like an individual tree basis, or like, so each situation is different, but there's several chemicals that you can use to protect your ash trees. They just have to be applied at the right time of year, and the tree has to be healthy enough to uptake the chemical. And so I brought a homeowner's guide to insecticide use. We have it on our website as well. It goes through all the different chemical options, and when to apply it, who can apply it, and so forth. Many communities use trunk injection method, and so that way, the chemical is put directly into the tree, and you avoid any of kind of the drenching around the root system that could lead to groundwater contamination and pollinator issues. So most communities use triage, or that's a brand name, chemical of it. And it's good for two years, and then you have to repeat it. It's, for cities, some cities even do it for three years, because it's 95% effective in that third year. And then they do a rotation of which trees they treat each year. And so it really depends on the tree. If your tree is a nice, mature 20-inch tree that's in good condition, located on the south side of your property and gives you lots of shade in the summertime, it might be worth treating that tree for the next 20 years before you ever reach what it would cost to remove it. So it really, there's a, you have to do, do the math for yourself in a particular given situation.
Is it a preventative, or is it a?
It's both.
Okay. So you?
So you can do it to prevent your tree from being infested, or you can do it after it's already lightly infested. You just have to have at least 70% of a healthy canopy or more for that tree to like take up the chemical and completely protect it. It's also can be used as a management tactic to reduce, you know, to remove trees on your own timeframe, and make sure an area retains some mature trees for a given period of time as you plan other things and get them growing. And it can also reduce EAB populations in a given, given location. So I've noticed there's been some neighborhoods that have banded together and treated a bunch of trees. It really reduces Emerald Ash Bore for the, for a number of years before it starts to build up in areas right, right around there again. Because any EAB that feeds on the tree is going to get a dose of that chemical. Any larvae that's underneath the bark feeding on the phloem is going to get a dose of that chemical as well.
So is it the resident's responsibility to treat it, or the city?
If it's on private property, it's going to be up to the resident.
Okay.
Yep. So trying to get information out to them so they know they should make a decision. Because if you don't treat it while it's still healthy enough, eventually, you're going to have to remove it. So it's better to have two options than, than one.
Other, is there, so we're a lake community. Are there residual, and we'll actually have a presentation after this, from Watershed District?
Yeah.
Are there groundwater concerns or surface water concerns with the use of that and use of that chemical near the lake?
Right. And that would be for the soil drench chemicals. The ones used for the soil drenches are usually a metoclopran, and that's a nicotinoid, and so that could have potential. And then there's also per-acre use limits when you're doing soil drenches like that.
Yeah.
You avoid that with the injection.
But the, but the injection method doesn't have that same?
Right.
Risk? Okay.
Right. Because the chemical's going directly into the tree.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, the county is quarantined. So what that means, that limits the movement of ash material in the Emerald Ash Bore life stage and in all hardwood firewood. And that's, hardwood firewood is anything four feet in length or less that's of a deciduous species. And so that just means you can't go from the quarantine county to a non-quarantine county with any of those materials. You can move within the quarantine area from adjacent quarantine counties, but you can't go from a quarantine county to a non-quarantine county. You can bring wood in from a non-quarantine county to a quarantine county, you just can't take it back out again. If you want to do any of those things, you have to get a compliance agreement with the Department of Agriculture, basically writing out the rules to make sure that you will mitigate any potential for spreading EAB. And so that's anywhere from heat treatment or chipping to one inch by one inch in two dimensions, which takes a tub grinder, things like that. Here's a picture of just a piece of firewood, just to drive that point home. I mean, because this is how it's spreading a lot across the country, taking large 50, 100-mile leaps. You can go down again. See, there's nothing there. Peel off the bark. There's the gallery. Still no insect. Keep going. And then there's the larva underneath the wood right there, just hidden away. And that's, that's in the pupil chamber, so if that was just left to sit, that would eventually turn into the adult and then emerge in a new location. So that's why we do that outreach campaign. So for management, we have some best, best management practices. So that's basically not doing work on ash trees during the active flight season, so when the beetles are out flying around, that's, I mean, storms do happen, but try to avoid doing any pruning and things like that, and only do that when the adult beetle is dormant and larvae are only underneath the bark. And that's October 1st through, through May 1st. All right. So your options are basically removals and treatments, like I already mentioned, or wait and decide later, which is usually the more expensive option. So you can do removals before EAB gets there, so removing trees that are already in poor condition. You can do trees with woodpecker damage. So if you're seeing that EAB-type woodpecker damage in a tree, by taking out that tree as opposed to the one next to it with no signs and symptoms, is that you're taking out a larger proportion of the Emerald Ash Bore population that way. And we got that information by doing a lot of peeling of trees over, over the last eight years. And then obviously removing dead trees. And then with the treatments, you can do it before EAB gets there, or you can do it once it's lightly infested, so. And the things you consider is how close is EAB to me? Is it here? Are we in a generally infested area? Okay, how large is the tree? And how good a condition? How many are there? Those are all factors you got to take into account. So really, I mean, for the public resource, having an inventory at least of ash, of knowing where your resource is, is a really good place to start. And having a condition rating with that is also a good idea, because then you can start going after the trees that are really in poor condition and taking them out first. And there's the homeowner's guidance to insecticide selection that I mentioned. I will also say, the Department of Ag did, over this last year, put together this thirty-page document that has lots of resources for different trees to replant, the different plans of action, when to do what, based on what stage of EAB infestation you're in. So it's available in PDF form on our main website, and it's worth a look through. It's, we use plain language. It's a pretty easy read and a lot of good relevant information.
Is that something that we could utilize, post on this website?
Oh, absolutely. Feel free, yep. Feel free to grab any, any of the documents on the MDA's website or any of that, link to it. All right, that's just more general information on how insecticides work, so. And biological control. So do you have any other questions at this point? Kind of what you're thinking? I'd rather just answer as is.
So anything out there that attacks emerald ashbore besides birds?
So we do have that biological control, so there's little parasitic wasps that are between one and four millimeters big, that one goes after the eggs and two of them go after the larval stage. Unfortunately, the one that's been doing the best has a small ovopositor, so it can't get through the really thick bark. And so it's really only protecting the younger and smaller ash trees. There is, that second larva parasitoid is just, it's newer, it's from the Russian Far East, and we don't know what kind of impact it's going to have, but it has a longer ovopositor and it can get through most bark thicknesses. So hopefully that gets established and can make a dent. We've been working with U of M on a lot of research for that, so.
Are there cities, I don't, doesn't have to be in Minnesota, that really have a stellar plan and are able to execute it that you could recommend?
Absolutely, I mean.
You're ending up on Dave's plate.
It really all depends how the city is set up and what kind of resources you have. So there is actually in the guidelines, we have like five different communities in the state and their example EAB management plans and what they're doing based on their resources. Yeah, so it's worth a, worth a good look. I will say places Rochester's doing a really good job. Cities like Apple Valley is doing a, doing a good job. It's a mix of treatment and removals. They're contracting out some of their treatments, and so they picked some high-value trees throughout the city, but they also made that contracted rate available to residents so that if residents wanted to treat their trees, they'd have it done by a professional for a reasonable cost, and then the city also knows that the tree is treated. So those are options as well. There's a number of communities doing that.
Yeah, that's, this whole thing is sickening as far as I'm concerned.
I know, it's, I'm a bearer of bad news usually when I show up places.
My ash trees are like that in the front yard?
I know. So for the average homeowner, for the average homeowner, treatment is about ten dollars a diameter inch. And so if you have big twenty, twenty-five inch tree, that's going to be about two hundred and fifty dollars every two to three years.
Better than removing it if it can be caught early, though?
Yeah, in many, many situations, yeah.
What do we, what do we, so city-owned property, how do we get our hand on, handle on kind of what inventory of ash trees looks like and what, what the exposure might be for the city's perspective?
I think to Jonathan's point, I think step one would be to get an inventory done, you know, of city parks, city-owned property. We're fortunate or unfortunate, we don't have boulevard trees, so you see a lot of cities with ash trees, like some of those pictures, that just run for blocks and blocks and blocks, and we do not have boulevard trees, so thankful to that, that we don't have that large amount of trees. But parks and open areas and stuff where we want to not have a dead tree or fall on somebody and stuff, so I think step number one is to try to get an inventory done of city-owned properties and see kind of what, what we have out there, or what kind of a number of, okay, how many ash trees do we have, and then work back from that.
Is there conversation internally about kind of a public awareness campaign? You know, something done more formally, more driven or pushed out from the city to just make our residents aware so we can potentially, you know, slow down advancement of this?
Yep, yeah, I think we can, I mean, with their assistance, the stuff on their websites, and to see what other cities are kind of doing on their websites, you know, most people don't mind if you kind of borrow templates and go that way, so I, kind of looking around and his, his point with those cities that are doing it well, to look into them and see how they do it and what they did and how they kind of get the word out, so.
They're happy to share information. Water bill inserts are a good place to start, too, with outreach.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if there's a community out there that's doing the right thing and are getting some results, we certainly want to hear about it.
Right.
That's for sure.
And also early, earlier is better than later.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
You tend to not hear about it when there's not that much of a problem, though, that's the thing.
Right, yeah.
Well, it seems to me to, a first logical step is just to really do a public education campaign about moving firewood.
There's, yeah, exactly.
You know?
Billboards only do so much and things like that.
Right.
If you're cutting down an ash tree in your yard, please don't bring it to your cabin or your hunting property, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Incredibly helpful.
Yep, thank you for having me.
Much appreciated.
Thanks. Let me know if you have any other questions going forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And next we have Hayward Avenue Cattail Harvest, Blaine with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District. Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I need some assistance getting this loaded.
We'll get you.
Thank you.
Dex flipped over.
His is on. It should be on screen.
I've got the same screen as everyone else.
That one.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Blaine Enikner, I'm project coordinator with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District. And I'm here just to give you a presentation requesting access to some city-owned parcels for a cattail harvest project that we're, we would like to implement. So we're requesting access to two parcels off Hayward Avenue North, east of, just east of First Lake, and then also the right-of-way along Hayward Avenue. It's approximately ten point five acres, and eight point two of those acres are in wetland. And this is considered Parsons Wetland, which is a DNR public water basin. Here's a map of the area, again, just east of First Lake, and the parcels, city-owned parcels are outlined in red, and the right-of-way runs along Hayward Avenue, along that red polygon. So within that, within those two parcels, there's a monoculture of invasive hybrid cattails, which are reducing wetland biodiversity and impairing the ecological function of that wetland. We, our engineering firm did some soil cores within that wetland, and it indicated that the soils have an excess of phosphorus. And then we also know that through some of the, the work that we've done, that the wetland is actually exporting some of that phosphorus into Forest Lake, reducing water quality in Forest Lake. So what we're hoping to do is do a water quality improvement project to improve water quality in Forest Lake via reducing the amount of phosphorus in those wetland soils through the cattail harvest, or harvest of cattails within that wetland. And this would be just removal of the emergent part of the plant, so the leaves, the cattail part. We would not be disturbing any of the wetland soils. We estimate that approximately twenty-five pounds of phosphorus would be removed per acre of cattails harvested, which would result in twenty-seven to sixty-six percent reduction of phosphorus load to Forest Lake. And this activity, this action has been identified in several watershed district studies and planning documents. The mechanism behind this is just interrupting the nutrient cycle of the, of the wetland, of the cattails within the wetland. Essentially, the wetland takes nutrient from the soil, turns it into vegetative matter to photosynthesize. At the end of the season, the plants die back, those nutrients go back into the roots, or that vegetation, dead vegetation falls back into the, the wetland, decomposes, and those nutrients are recycled. What we would do would be remove that vegetation, so thus interrupting the cycle and also removing the phosphorus stored inside those wetland plants. And this has, mechanism has been demonstrated in the literature as a way to remove phosphorus. Here's just a couple of studies on the right, more recent studies. What we're proposing to do is enter into the wetland in late July, early August of 2020. That's when the maximum amount of phosphorus and nitrogen is in the, in the emergent vegetation. We're in discussion, we applied for a grant with the Minnesota Conservation Corps to get their conservation crew out here to harvest the cattails by hand, so they'd be using hand tools, power hand tools, weed whips, hedge trimmers, et cetera, to remove the vegetation, again, once again above ground, no disturbance of the soils. We'd pile those, that vegetation within the wetland and then enter back in during the winter to remove that material. We'd be using either heavy equipment, track hoes, dump trucks, something like that, or just ATVs and trailers. Haven't quite figured out that moving part yet. Likely it would be a track hoe with a dump truck. And then we'd be removing that vegetation and recycling it. Here's just some photos of the wetland. You can see the monoculture of invasive cattails. And then also look at the access, elevation of the road surface and wetland are fairly, fairly similar, so we should be able to just drive off of the road, onto the road prism into the wetland after it freezes, and then not really disturb much there. We've been in discussions with the University of Minnesota to partner on a study for this project, and we're hopefully, hoping to evaluate the effectiveness of this action as a removal mechanism for phosphorus. And those, that study would inform this project to see whether, determine whether or not this is a cost-effective means for the area to reduce phosphorus. We would consider the 2020 project as a pilot project. If the data indicates that it is successful, we would like to implement the project for several years moving forward till we meet our phosphorus reduction goal for the wetland. And this has been done in other areas. They're doing it a lot in Canada. They're using the material for a number of different things, for livestock feed, biofuel. They're also using it for fertilizer or just compost mulch, and that's exactly what we'd like to do. We plan to take the vegetation to one of the agricultural fields that we rent in the basin and then apply it as a top treatment, basically a mulch for that farm field to improve soil health. So again, we're just requesting permission from the city just for access and implement the project, no financial obligation whatsoever. And then just a few fun facts about cattails for those of you that are not familiar. Pretty much all parts of the cattail are edible. Certain times of the year, you can eat it raw or cooked. And so if you ever lost in the wilderness, cattails could definitely save your bacon. Speaking of pork products, just a recipe here for some cattail pulled pork, if anybody's feeling adventurous.
Have you had it?
I have not. Maybe, maybe one day.
Bring it, tonight.
Maybe one day. And I'd also like to note that the permitting process for the DNR permit to do this can take up to six months. So we're, again, hoping to implement this fall, so we'd appreciate it if you guys would review and, you know, let us know if this is a possibility at the, the next city council meeting on the 27th. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It looks like this is near kind of a residential, I mean, there's housing there. So is there communication conversation with those folks about what you're doing in that area?
We would, we would definitely send out flyers and let folks know what's going on. There's also a possibility that we could, you know, have some staging on some of the properties. One of our board members actually lives right there.
Okay.
And then we've also got a relative of one of the staff members with the engineering firm that we work with that lives on the lake. So it's Forest Lake, a series of homes, Hayward Avenue, and then the two, the wetland parcels.
I imagine some people really like cattails, and seeing them being removed might not be a positive thing for them, so I think that's a.
We'd be only removing one or two acres at a time, so it would be a small portion, portion of the wetland. It's, you know, over eight acres, so it would be a small chunk here. The next year, we'd move around until we remove enough phosphorus from the system. So there would be some disturbance, but it would be spread out over a number of years if it's proven to be an effective means of removing phosphorus.
Well, and I think if they understand.
How did this hybrid cattail come about? I mean, in the first place?
Yeah.
Give us a little history on that.
I'm not real, I don't have a, a real good answer for you. I know it's a hybrid, so it's a native cattail that we have. It's an exotic species that came over. They hybridized to form this particular species, which is, you know, real weedy, so to speak. Just invades areas, takes them over and creates a monoculture, which essentially, you know, blocks out all the other good species, good native species, so you have a lack of biodiversity within the wetland. And then it's just the whole ecological function with different species, biota, biota and flora also, so. I don't have, I'm not entirely sure when this hybrid's been established, or its origin.
Okay, well, thanks. You know, cattails have always been part of something I've been living with my whole life, you know, with the hunting and all that kind of thing, and, and didn't ever realize that there was a cattail out there trying to do damage, you know? That's what we're looking at here.
It's kind of like the wetland version of buckthorn.
Yes, very much so. They just kind of take over an area, you know? If there's, if they're, you know, in, in low abundance, it's not really an issue, but when they take over an area, it can block out other things and.
Right, okay. Any reason why we shouldn't do this? What would be, other than perhaps neighborhood disturbance, what would be other arguments?
You know, I think the way that we've got it planned out, it should have minimal disturbance. You know, we only take equipment in after it's frozen, so we shouldn't be disturbing the, you know, road prism. If there is any damage from equipment coming in, we'd obviously fix that up on our way out. The only thing, the only possible drawback is just a bit of traffic control during removal, so we'd have to coordinate that. We'd have people out there directing traffic and whatnot, so we would take care of all of that, but that's the only drawback I can think of. We'd be removing everything by hand, so it'll be minimal disturbance as far as noise. And then the equipment getting in there during winter should only be a few days to actually remove all that material.
So if I understand, it's an eight, eight acre, about eight acre parcel?
Correct.
And you, the plan is to do a couple of acres at a time?
Right.
And you may choose after you're one to stop if it's not effective, or you may choose to continue?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
How many years do you anticipate? Is there a period in your permit that you would apply for?
Yeah, the permit we'd have to apply for every single year, but we, the agreement that we would like to establish with the city would be for a ten-year kind of trial period. And I do have some of that paperwork. I did draft a cooperative agreement for the council to review, and then I also have a draft of the permit that would require a signature by the city.
Perfect. Well, I think, you know, we've got a lot of residents in this community who are pretty passionate about the health of the lake, and I think when the message is this is going to improve the health, or potentially going to improve the health of the lake, I think that's a positive message to carry forward, so.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a problem, on my end at least.
I don't see an issue either.
Any other questions for Blaine or staff? Sounds like this would come back for official action at a future council meeting. Give Burt an opportunity and staff opportunity to review. Perfect, very good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Is it possible to get it on the agenda for the 27th?
Just the, this particular or the cooperative agreement?
The cooperative agreement.
If you get it to us today or tomorrow, it might be.
Okay.
Just needs to get through attorney review.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item is an update on the Human Rights Commission. I'll take, I'll take this as an, for the presentation if we want to pull up. Just did a quick slide deck. So we've had a number of kind of brief conversations or mentions over this last year about the Human Rights Commission, and I referenced it again when we were doing liaison appointments at our last meeting and wanted to give an update on some activities that have been happening over this last year and make a suggestion for going forward, looking for suggestion in particular on an interim plan, and we'll get to that. Maybe just a little bit of history and background on the Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission is a creature of ordinance of the city of Forest Lake. We do have an ordinance in place. Sections thirty-one forty to thirty-one forty-three within our city code address the function of the Human Rights Commission, and that was provided to you in your packet. It was created in 2001. It has been amended, the ordinance and the. It has been amended, the ordinance and the, the structure of the Human Rights Commission has been amended a number of times. Last amendment was done in March of 2011. And if you go through the ordinance, I'm not going to go through it in detail at this moment, but kind of talks through purpose, powers and duties of the Human Rights Commission. Outlines membership, being residents of the city of Forest Lake and also provides for a non-voting member representative of the Forest Lake Area School District, as well as a representative from the Forest Lake Police Department. And then there was also a section that refers to bylaws of the Human Rights Commission. Just summarizing activities that have occurred and kind of major effort of the Human Rights Commission since its duration. It's, you know, it's always challenging to try to summarize all of the activities of a board of an entity that's been in a pla, in place for so long. But in general, the Human Rights Commission has sponsored events. There's been a number of different speaker series. There has been a complaint hotline that has been operated, as well as some dispute resolution services. Recent history, when I was sworn in and took, took office a year ago, I met, sat down and met with the Human Rights Commission members and kind of got an update on where things were at that time. Also, we realized through some work with staff that actually all of the terms of the existing Human Rights Commission members had actually expired. And some of them had been expired for a couple of years. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, as positions were expiring, they weren't being renewed. And we had individuals out of the goodness of their heart continuing to meet and continuing to do, trying to do the best they could with the resources they had. However, there were complaints of lack of council support, lack of leadership direction. What are we doing? Where are we going with this? Why are we here? What's our function? And how are we really connected to both the city of Forest Lake as well as our overall community? So there were a group of individuals that were meeting, I would call that, they thought they were meeting in official capacity, but again, because they had expired terms, it was more in an unofficial, casual capacity. And throughout that, the most couple, couple of years, there were open positions and also there was a kind of an ongoing challenge of quorum. You know, if there was a meeting that was going to have quorum and kind of just meeting the overall minimum substance of an active commission of the city. And I would say not for lack of trying of some hardworking individuals that were really well-meaning and trying to do the right thing. Just kind of a lack of overall support and leadership, I would say, at the council and city leadership level, which is unfortunate. Can we go back one more, go back just, and also just to highlight again, this sense of what is our, what is our mission? There, in the bylaws, our activities and in our ordinance activities that we say the Human Rights Commission are going to support. But those were words on a page and I wouldn't say that there was an active work plan that there was consensus and full support on, so. So that happened, that meeting happened in the first quarter of 2019. I then took upon myself to just, you know, have some conversations, review, what are we doing? Trying to get more of a sense of the history and how we got to this point. Also trying to get a sense of where the community was and opportunities for next steps. And we can move to the next slide. I was approached by Superintendent of Forest Lake Area Schools to enter and to start conversations about a partnership opportunity. They were wanting to start a partnership with the Forest, with the Forest Lake YMCA and also the broader resource network of the YMCA through the YMCA Twin Cities. And also area, cities and townships on having a overall conversation in what later has kind of become this Everyone Belongs series. The superintendent was interested in kind of refocusing the district's effort in this area and, again, looking for other interested parties to join in that effort. As part of that, the Forest Lake YMCA and the YMCA Twin Cities has an Equity Innovation Center and they do this work. And so through a series of meetings throughout the summer and fall, we kind of explored different options. Explored appetite and interest of other mayors within the Forest Lake School District. As you know, the district has a broad footprint from a municipality standpoint. So there was an effort to get voices from all of the elected officials, or at least the elected mayors and town boards and chairs within the district. We also took a look at what has, a series of events that have happened in Hastings and a partnership that has been forged between the YMCA, the city of Hastings and the Hastings School District. That model has actually been used as a model for this work by the League of Minnesota Cities and is referenced and just spoken highly of it throughout our region as a, just a great model of partnership to do this work. In some observations in what was done in Hastings, there's a, it's a great partnership model on how three different entities, again, the YMCA, a city and a school district can work together. A great path has been paved on how this work can be led through the YMCA and the leadership that they have and the resources that they have at the Equity Innovation Center. But also a few differences. The Hastings, city of Hastings footprint and the Hastings School District footprint is a very close proximity. It is a much different situation than we have in Forest Lake where you have at least six, other six different cities within the school district and a number of different townships. And so we have a much broader set of municipalities at the table. But we still feel that there is value in kind of seeing what, the work that's been done there and considering that and just we're considering our next steps. So this group and the series of discussions has just met a number of times to kind of outline and to explore the different resources available. We have, and I'm happy to share with you, if you would like to see at a future presentation, a presentation from the YMCA's Equity Innovation Center, they would be happy to come and give a full presentation of the services they've provided. I would do a, not a great job of representing that work. And so rather than go through that presentation myself, if we're interested, I'd rather kind of invite them to come to another session to kind of give a little bit broader background on what they do and the types of services that they can provide. Let's move to the next slide, if we could. So out of this discussion, starting to explore what partnerships might look like, it was suggested that we start with first steps being a learning series. And so a, a learning series was hosted and members of council were invited to attend. A three-part learning series that was hosted during the fourth quarter of 2019 on three different topics. Unconscious bias, dimensions of diversity and cultural lens. They were highly, we had excellent participation and excellent attendance. We had a list of over 90 individuals that have attended at least one session and many individuals attended all three session. Very positive feedback from session attendees. And the purpose of the learning series was, yes, let's provide some basic education, but let's also start to gather a group of interested parties who would be interested in perhaps next steps. And let's start to solicit feedback on what those next steps might be. There is a, do we have a video, the clip to the video? The YMCA did a quick three-minute video that kind of summarized the learning series. And if we can get the technology to work, maybe worth taking a look at.
Oh, gosh.
We are at Forest Lake doing a community engagement process. We get the community really authentically engaging in identifying what are the real challenges? And then helping us to find solutions to those challenges.
Welcome to our third learning series. The name of the initiative is Everyone Belongs. And we felt that that was an inclusive concept that would invite people into the conversation.
So what we're going to do now is you're going to find somebody and you're going to talk about where did you grow up?
The communities are more diverse today than we were five years ago. So this is about being responsive to that changing demographic of the district.
I have now a Jamaican daughter-in-law. And I want to make sure that she fits in our family because we have 11 of us are like me.
It's all about awareness, so knowing that you are now self-aware of it will even make a difference in her sense of belonging.
Just like every other community, we have some people who are struggling. We identify young people who need additional support or haven't had the same opportunities as others. And so that's what we've got the ball rolling.
We'll have school staff, we'll have students, we'll have parents, we'll have elected officials, all working together having this important conversation.
We started with unconscious bias and understanding the elements of bias and breaking down elements. The second session that we did was around mental diversity. Tonight, I will be helping to facilitate cultural lens. So think about, what are your cultural lens? Who are you as an individual?
It's been a lot of really rich conversation and I think it brings a huge amount of value. You can't change the community if you yourself are not first change.
Your community has changed. Minnesota is changed.
The Y is a community leader when it comes to topics related to inclusion, equity. And they've got a well-established curriculum. They have staff that are very versed in training and facilitating these important conversations.
I think it's really fascinating and I think it's important for us to embrace diversity, especially in Forest Lake.
And as our population grows in diversity and there's new challenges, we have to really focus on social and emotional learning as long as there are cultural differences.
It's really good finally knowing that not everyone's going to think the same and that they're going to have different points of views based on like their background.
I think it's a great way to start opening that communication up and getting the conversation started within the community.
Everyone should feel belonged, even though they may have different beliefs or come from different backgrounds.
It's been an incredibly rich conversation. I'm absolutely convinced that we are building capacity. We're, we're changing the ground on which we, we do our work and where we live. And by doing that, we're creating a better place.
The technology actually worked. It's nice when that happens. So let's maybe also talk a little bit about, so, so next steps. The, the path that was followed in Hastings and the path that is recommended by the YMCA. Once you've got a group of community members and leaders kind of, kind of interested and involved as we now have with having come out of this learning series, is to then go into a focused working session or a series of focused working sessions. And the YMCA has a process that they call their Equity Innovation Lab. It is a service they provide and through this guided process, they are able to either facilitate with their own set, within their own facility downtown or in this situation, they are offering to bring those resources here to Forest Lake and bring a facilitated session through this Equity Innovation Lab experience. Expectation would be it's a Sat, one Saturday, it's a long day from 9:00 to 3:00 PM and that is a community vision session. Again, a facilitated exercise that creates this community vision for equity within our community. And then a series of working sessions, four different evenings, that are time-blocked and facilitated to create from that vision an actual work plan. Not having been part of one of these before, I can't tell, I can't predict entirely where this process lands and where we end up as far as an outcome from May 12th. But knowing the facilitators that are involved and knowing the success that other communities and other groups have had in going through this type of a process, I think it's a valuable exercise to go through. And my goal is that we as a city would support the process and also be positioned to support some of the outcomes that come out of that process. Let's go on to the next slide. And so my suggested next steps, because we're at this unique position where we needed to do something with our Human Rights Commission anyway. We have this work that's already happening in this community and brought to us by the YMCA in the Forest Lake School District. I would like us to convene and start a Human Rights Exploratory Committee. Not to just reboot the Human Rights Commission as it existed a year ago, but to take a year, create an exploratory committee and charge that committee with doing five things. Participate in the Everyone Belongs Equity Innovation Lab and go along with that process or follow that process. Solicit feedback, independent from the Everyone Belongs series. Solicit feedback from residents, community leaders, city staff, other stakeholders. Do a little bit deeper than kind of picking up a little bit of what I started on, how did we get to this point? What's worked well? What hasn't worked well? What pitfalls do we need to watch out for? Just getting that rich feedback. Evaluating structure and scope of work of similar commissions of our benchmark city, cities. What are our communities of our size and what are our benchmark cities doing in this area? Evaluating resources and programming from the Department of Human Rights and the League of Minnesota Cities. There is a lot of information out there on this topic and there's a lot of information that's available to us to use as a city. A lot of it frankly, free of charge. Just kind of again, to evaluate the portfolio of tools available. And then ultimately, with that background information, with the outcomes from the Everyone Belongs Equity Innovation Lab, bring back some recommendations to council of here is a suggested future work plan, suggested future budget, membership and an updated ordinance, if, if an updated ordinance is needed. I would anticipate this taking probably about a year. The work with the YMCA is scheduled to be done in the first half of the year. And then I would say just general routine meeting cadence and kind of pulling together suggested next steps. Having those recommendations for council to consider towards the end of the year, which just also happens to align nicely with our budget season and we can be kind of making those considerations as part of the budget series. So I'm open to feedback. It's just some thoughts and my thoughts on how we could get started and kind of continue the momentum and continue what's already been done. And a specific ask of council, you're all welcome to join for the, the Equity Innovation Lab series and those dates are in front of you. And then also consider nominations on who should help with this work over this next year. I would recommend that we follow our other commission guidance and that we have only Forest Lake residents serve. Certainly there may be interested parties that might want to be in an advisory role, but I think that the, kind of the technical group should be Forest Lake residents. And open to questions or feedback. I've just wanted to give an update and it's been a while since we've talked about this and certainly we haven't talked about it in any depth, so.
I'd just like to say I like the idea of us partnering right now with the school district and the Y. Familiar with their Equity Innovation Lab and it's really high-quality work, so excited to see that come here. And for me, it, it seems like a, a no-brainer. Why would you not use this process to, to reinvigorate our Human Rights Commission? Because it, it's seeming to me that it wasn't that successful in the past. I'm actually wondering who answered that hotline? So I, to me, this, this, I love the idea that the school district with the youth and bringing the youth into this work because they're, they're our future residents, we want them to stay here, so.
Other thoughts, questions, feedback? Any opposition to kind of moving forward as proposed? Again, we'd be considering a one-year, kind of an interim working group that would be in a working group format. I am happy to be the council liaison to that group, would like to be engaged in the process anyway. But also want to engage in a, in a broader, a broader group. I will be reaching out to the members that we do have of the Human Rights, that were on the Human Rights Commission when we kind of stopped meeting. And will, you know, kind of provide update and provide opportunity to become re-engaged if they're interested. And then I know that there's some other community members that are interested as well. And I fully expect that throughout this next six, throughout these next six months, there will be other residents that are part of that process and will also want to be interested in what's next and interested in helping with the work, so.
I guess, I guess I, I'm fully supportive of the direction this is all headed. My, my one comment, comment I, I guess would be to be mindful of the placement on that committee. And ensure that, you know, historically, you know, we've been a fairly kind of, you know...
Not diverse?
Not diverse. You know, group that has been doing things to or for the community rather than with the community. And so that would just be my one observation and recommendation, to be, to really be mindful of that and really be intentional about those cho, the, the choices, the folks that... And, and be, approach that authentically and, and really, really try to bring folks in, you know. You don't want to have a token participation situation. You don't want to have a token participation situation in any way, shape, or form.
I also think you're looking for diversity on multiple sets, so it's race, gender, income, age. You're looking to, yes.
Sexual orientation.
Right. Yep.
Across the board.
I agree. Any other feedback, questions?
I have, I have seen no issues with moving forward with this.
Very good.
No, I, no, I, no.
If you have people in your network or individuals that you would like to see nominated, just like any other council nomination, please send that my direction. We will get some information out on our website to solicit some interest in membership as well. I haven't done that. I wanted to get, I wanted to have this conversation before we started actively soliciting anything. And also, we'll just need to kind of communicate the difference between what is this working group and the full Human Rights Commission, so. All right. Staff, anything else we need to consider, questions related to this?
I don't think so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. And not having anything else on our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have motion to adjourn.
A second. Motion of a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we're adjourned.